Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane, are you June 8?
Yes. Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Nye?
Definitely here.
Councilmember Mallory?
By the way.
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Present.
And Mayor Scoog?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, June. We'll move on to the number three, discussion of proposed 15, 16 budget, starting with human resource. Karen, you're up, and Barbara Lear, welcome. It's good to see you again. Barb starts first, huh? Okay, Barb, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is my annual visit to report to you the results of our negotiations on our employee benefit plans. The report that I've given you in writing is in the usual format, and on page one, of course, I've given you the background since 2003, remembering that we returned to Blue Cross in 2005. And since 2007, we have been more than fortunate in the results of our renewal negotiations. You can see the number of zero renewal increases that we've been able to negotiate, remembering that in all of those years, Blue Cross has not even been able to pass on an annual medical trend increase to us. So, you know, each year, at the end of my presentation, I say, "It's coming." And so, no surprise that literally the law of averages has caught up with us. But we shall not forget how fortunate we have been for the last seven years. It's truly a miracle. Of course, I must say that I didn't expect it to hit all in one year. If you think about the fact that trend, annual medical trend, has been running 10% to 15% each of those seven years, you can see how much ahead of the game we are. You know, even if they had been allowed to pass on 5% per year, that would have been 35% to us this year. Remembering also that in the last couple of years, part of that negotiation was that Blue Cross agreed to even waive the Obamacare fees and taxes as part of our renewal result. Now, going into the actual renewal components for this year. Annual medical trend has gone down considerably to 8%, but look at our claims experience, credibility of 96%, which means that basically, we're 100% credible. Our claims experience is the largest component of our renewal factor. As you can see, we have, in the last 12 months, increased our claims by 31%. That's a major increase. I haven't seen that kind of increase in overall claims experience on an account in probably 15 years. So, we have had a lot of claims. And those claims are a combination of overall higher utilization, as well as some large claims. As you can see, Blue Cross considers a large claim, a claim paid after our medical provider discounts, which run around, average around 49% off full retail. After those discounts, they consider a large claim, anything paid over $30,000, okay? So, we have had 11 of those large claims alone, and you can see they range from a little over $30,000 to $135,000 each of those large claims. Those large claims alone totaled almost $1 million, paid in the last 12 months. As you can also see, that just about doubled the large claims that we had last year, which were 549,000. So, again, our claims experience really exploded. Our insured population increased by an additional nine employees last year, but five of those were COBRA participants. And remember, the only reason that a terminated employee would apply and stay on the plan and pay the entire premium under the COBRA legislation would be because they need it, you know? And they did need it, and they did use it. Last year, you know, I was very aware that we normally run about one to two COBRA participants per year on our plan, and we were running an average of five to seven COBRA participants. So, I knew that in advance that was going to be an additional liability for us. Ongoing older demographics is another component. You know, we talk about this every year. In spite of a number of retirements that we've had in the last year, and a number of terminations, a lot of turnover because of a lot of relocations, people moving and transferring out of the area, I understand, but our older demographics still prevail. We have 82 employees over 50. Again, that was 43% of our total population, which really only differed by 1% from last year. 22 of those, 55 to 59, and 30 over age 60. So, our older demographics pretty much remain the same. As I've been telling you for the last three years, Obamacare and health care reform legislation mandates additional fees and taxes to every account. In this case, for us this year, we had a total of 4.8% in taxes, fees, and then a mandated benefit change, okay? So, we start out with that, in addition to our very escalated claims experience. Now, this year's actual renewal negotiations. On January 27, I learned that our renewal was 29.2%. And I've got to tell you, I had some sleepless nights since the end of January. And I will also tell you that the underwriting process and the renewal negotiations this year was very different process than any other time, actually, in my 32 years with you, okay? Because 29.2% would have cost us, as you can see, a little over $530,000 additional budget dollars. My process, my strategy, was to try to convince Blue Cross that this was an aberration of the paid claims. You know, that this was different, it was because of our COBRA people, it was because we had terminations, et cetera, et cetera. And I did a lot of investigation on each and every large claim, and whether or not it's an ongoing diagnosis, to try to convince them, you know, that things were going to get better. I mean, that's the, really, that's the only strategy you could use with the kind of loss ratio that we've had this year. As you can see, you know, they inched down to a little over 24% and then 18%. And we're talking about two months' worth of discussion with the underwriting manager. I must tell you that for many weeks, I myself was convinced that we weren't going to get away with anything but a 20% rate increase, because it was totally justified because of our claims experience, okay? So, you know, harder to argue when you know darn well it's justified, and, you know, we've basically had it passed for seven years. When I got them down to 15%, 14.9, that's where they stayed for like two and a half weeks. That is it. You know, we cannot go any further. And I will tell you, in spite of all of the renewal components that I've reviewed with you, the final negotiations were based on one thing and one thing only. I simply told underwriting, "We will not accept anything less than a single-digit rate increase. That's what our budget can afford." Having said that, and I know you've questioned me before on this, you know, we do budget in advance. We do recognize that we've been very fortunate, and, you know, along this, along the process here, I believe that we budgeted up to a 20% increase for benefits. And then we went down to 15%, you know, hoping that it would get better. So, in order to get what we finally got, I'll tell you that underwriting finally decided to take a leap of faith and simply throw out their underwriting formula. That's exactly their words. And they said, "We're going to have faith that you're right, because you know your client very well, and things are going to get better." So, we need to pray. That's what I need to tell you. We need to pray for the next 12 months. You know, do I believe in my heart and soul that it is an aberration? Yes, I do, but not a complete aberration. You've got to remember that the underwriting team has cut their reserves over many years for us, you know, reserves to pay future claims if we ever leave them. And so, those reserves have just disappeared. So, you know, their job is to project future claims payment. So, in the end, I must tell you that we ended up with really a 4% renewal, but good old Obamacare, and this makes me really nauseous, to be honest with you, increased that by the 4.8%. Because they came down from 29% all the way down to four, they just were not willing to absorb those ACA/Obamacare fees and taxes. So, we're ending up with 8.8%. But remember, that is for all our current benefit levels. You know, I never brought up that we would possibly accept any benefit changes, because I don't believe we want to. We want to maintain the highest level of benefits we can for as long as we possibly can. So, as you can see, we went from 530,000 down to about, close to 160,000, which saved us real budget money of $370,000. So, we did well for what the facts were this year. Another thing that I always keep in mind is the impact on the employees, and what kind of increase it's going to mean to the employees' pocketbook. And in this case, the monthly contribution on a gross basis is only going up for family members. Of course, the town is absorbing the increase for employees, but for family members, only $29.82. And after that's paid on a pre-tax Section 125 basis, you're talking about a little over $22 a month, which is certainly very acceptable after all the years when we've not had an increase. So, our group health insurance rate history, which again, now includes this 8.8%, our 10-year average, 2.4% per year, and our five-year average, 2.6%, still way, way below trend and average renewals. And I was asked some years ago to note what our original renewals would have been, and they would have averaged close to 17% per year, which is about trend, a little over Our Meritas Dental Plan, then, this year, came in at 6.3%, and noticed that that included almost 3% for Obamacare reform and taxes, because it affects the dental insurance as well. And that was brought down to 4%. And frankly, I knew that every budget dollar this year had to be used for our health insurance renewal. So, the first thing I did was to go to all of the ancillary coverage carriers and say, "It's got to be zero," because if we can get zero on every other line of coverage, then obviously, we have more dollars to spend, you know, for whatever the health insurance renewal ends up to be. So, we got a zero on the dental, and you can see our 10-year average increase, still only 1.5%. When you think of dental trend, trend runs on dental 7% to 8%. Our basic life insurance, our group life insurance, again, I extended the rate guarantee now through 2016, so no increase there. And you remember, in 2013, we updated that part of our benefit plan by increasing the maximum life insurance from $50,000 to $75,000, and that at the time, in 2013, affected 83 of our employees. So, we did that update. So, again, in closing, the town's additional cost, zero on all of our ancillary coverages, and the 159,000 for our health insurance increase. I've also included, as I always do, a detailed executive summary, which is a text form of the presentation that I've given you, and it gives you every single detail of the renewal process. I want to mention to you as well that we recognize that you, as our council, have been very aware of the need for improved mental health and behavioral health benefits. And there had been some improvements in that area as part of Obamacare, the Mental Parity Act, but this year, I am really happy to announce that we are filling a gap in our overall employee benefit program by introducing, effective July 1, an onsite, very involved employee assistance program. The Holman Group is the group that we chose. I researched a number of organizations, and they did not fit our needs, because they didn't have enough local providers. And without the providers, what good is the plan? The Holman Group, just for your information, ensures the county, the city of Prescott, the firefighters, the Yavapai Fire, and the medical hospital in both locations. They were the folks that did the crisis intervention for the Yavapai Fire tragedy. And we've had a lot of good inputs, saying that they did a fabulous job. So, they were clearly the winners, and we're happy that they are going to be on board, effective July 1. And the cost of this employee assistance program, between $4,500 and $5,000 a year for an onsite EAP, very, very competitive. And that is to cover all our employees and all of their family members, both our, all of our full-time employees and our part-time employees. So, a very worthwhile addition. And Karen has been, and I've given you a one-page handout, which just kind of highlights the EAP program. I'll let Karen go into that a little bit more, because she's had meetings with the employees in the last week and has some good input for you on that. Any other questions about the renewal and it's the process this year?
Questions, anyone? Barbara, I think we are relieved, yes. Laura says relieved. Mary says relieved.
Bravo, bravo.
Karen, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. I won't take much more of your time, but I do want to comment on a few things. Human resources budget items, of course, are in Chapter 6, under the General Fund, and beginning on page 75, if you follow along at all in your budget book. Just to touch, we have had a really busy year in human resources regarding our accomplishments in the last year. A lot of our time has been invested in recruitment. As you know, we've been experiencing some higher turnover as of late, and so, we were busy hiring over 120-some paid staff members, as well as 72 unpaid employees through our Volunteer Central program. And so, with those increased recruitment activities, I was proud that we not only accomplished them, and just in the busyness of it, but during that time, we also went through a three-month implementation process to do an online application system. If that, you'll recall, we talked about that last year, as well as we implemented online background investigation. And so, going through that implementation with the increased recruitment was a challenge, but we got through it, and it really paid off, in that we now are experiencing a reduction in our time to fill vacancies, which is a great thing, as well as we've actually reduced hard costs in our processing of backgrounds. During this past year, it was our first year to implement the wellness incentive that you approved last year, and with that, we were able to meet our goal of at least 35% of the employees participating each quarter in wellness activities. And I'm projecting that we will reach our 50% goal by the end of this fiscal year for those that actually took opportunity to cash out, if you will, with their reimbursement of $200 by participating in the wellness program. So, that's been great, and we're excited. Everyone already asked during open enrollment meetings this week, "Are we going to get it again next year?" And I was pleased to tell them that, yes, we have that in the budget, and it'll be reoffered again, starting over in July 1. We also spent time in worker compensation losses. Last year, I mentioned to you that we had experienced some additional losses, and so, we put real effort to it and have been able to reduce that by 15%. So, we're pleased to share that information with you. In the new year to come, with our objectives, we really do want to focus on retention as being a key issue for us. And with that, one component will be implementing a new supervisor orientation program, while we'll work at developing our leadership and their core competencies, as well as providing leadership training to the more tenured supervisors in the organization on things like performance management, employee engagement, those kind of topics, to help with that retention. And we're convinced that we have a really great place to work, and we want to make sure and continue on that trend and work at our retention. Employee health and wellness is really important to us, and so, I'm very excited about the new EAP. One thing that Barb didn't mention, how rich the program is. As I explained to the employees, it will provide them and anyone in their family six hours, basically, of counseling sessions with over 90 providers in our local community to meet their specific needs. And that's six hours per year, per incident, per person in their family. So, for that $4,000 to $5,000, that's a very rich benefit. It also includes a financial and legal component, so they have free access to an attorney to help them with creating a will, or a power of attorney situation, or if they're having difficulties in some manner with whatever it may be, that they have those legal services, as well as financial services. So, we're pleased. The last big focus that I might mention for the new year to come is in regards to federal mandates. January 2016 will be the first time that employers are mandated, required, to submit reports to the IRS on how we've handled and administered offering insurance under Affordable Care Act to our employees. So, on a monthly basis, we're tracking and making sure that that's being accomplished, so that we can complete the appropriate reporting requirements in January, and that'll be a big undertaking for us this first year. Also, some changes with the ADA. So, we want to make sure that our light duty assignments and our case management with that and reasonable accommodations is on task, so we're heightening our efforts in our case management. As well as, you'll notice, the last bullet point under the objectives is that now, under the Affordable Care Act amendments, Section 7 of the Fair Labor Standards Act, requires that we have a separate place for our nursing mothers, and we're anticipating changes in the Pregnancy Discrimination Act that will actually treat normal pregnancy as a disability under the ADA. Where in the past, it's been more, if it were complications, that pregnancy by itself, we would always kind of giggle and say, "It wasn't a disability, it wasn't an illness." But that might be well-changing, so we'll make sure we're prepared for it. And then last, I just wanted to explain real quickly, just take a moment, on pages 80 and 81, I did have three fund lines where there were $5,000 or more difference from last year and this year, so I thought that might cause question for you and wanted to explain. Fund line number 3425, which is our Benefit Plan Administration line, is going to go up about $4,700. This is the line where I take care of things like our COBRA, flexible spending account, ICMA, our retirement trust fund. Those are those monthly and annual fees that are due. As you're seeing in the budget, we're looking at adding nine new positions in the organization, so that my whole 3% that was allotted in operation went to this fund line to take care of those additional expenditures. Then, at the bottom of the page, 4353, the software and hardware maintenance, looks like I dropped $7,000 and some change. I didn't. We're still spending that money, but Bill was kind enough to help me move those monies to non-departmental, because that's our online applicant tracking system and our performance management system that all departments use. So, we just moved that money to non-departmental. And then last, on page 81, fund line 6115, the awards. It again looks like a $7,000 decrease. In actuality, that is true, but I wanted to reassure you, that's not a deduction in the wellness awards and the programs that you implemented and requested that we do, but instead, it's service awards. We won't have as many employees hitting those 5, 10, 15 increments just by chance. We always look at who's going to hit those mile markers and what the awards would cost for those folks in the new year to come, and that's back to its more normal range that you see in the past, that 3,000 to 5,000 range. Last year, we had a lot of people hitting those mile marks and in front of you. So, I think it's awesome to see human resources total operation expenditures actually dropped, right? By three, almost $4,000, it appears. But again, please remember that we moved the software monies over to non-departmental, so I do appreciate the 3% operational increase. That really helped with benefit administration. And that's all I had to say, unless you have other questions for me.
Questions, anyone?
Yeah, I have, I guess, two questions, really. Was there any additional training required to, in order for us to implement the employee assistance program? And also, what additional training might there have been for the ACA requirements? Or did you just increase the responsibility of some of the other ladies there?
Yeah, very good questions. So, let me take those one at a time. First of all, with the employee assistance program, the Holman Group does provide excellent training, both online, virtually, as well as on, to facilitate in-house, if we so choose to. We have four hours available that we've already arranged in the contract for them to come on campus to provide, perhaps, for example, crisis counseling with the police department if there's a significant incident that they can come in. So, we're really looking at doing it online or in-house with myself, with their materials. So, beginning in July with that implementation, we will definitely be providing our supervisors, for sure, orientation to that new EAP program. There is a performance management component to it, so if the stressors of life in our employees' personal world is impacting their performance, and that's being identified, that performance is suffering, now the supervisors have the ability to use the performance management element to help them overcome that and keep that performance where it needs to be, so they don't have to worry about their job either. So, they will provide that orientation, and we will do that. Holman is also going to be here at our health fair on June 4, so all the employees have received information through open enrollment meetings this week. That information's also online for them to review, and I've encouraged them to meet with Holman at the health fair, to answer their specific questions, and then we'll be able to pass out their cards with the 800 number. It's literally as easy for the employees as calling the 800 number, identifying themselves that they are with the town of Prescott Valley. There's no numbers for them to have to quote to be able to have access to the services. They just identify themselves with the town, and then what their circumstances are, and they will connect them with one of those 90-some providers, and take care of those first six-hour sessions for them. I've told the employees that it's completely confidential, that all that human resources... and they will connect them with one of those 90-some providers and take care of those first six-hour sessions for them. I've told the employees that it's completely confidential, that all that Human Resources receives is a utilization report. We don't even know what departments the employees are from that are using the services. But of course, renewals next year are based on utilization, so that part of it is tracked. And then training regarding, last, I'm sorry?
ACA.
Yes, Affordable Care Act. Barb just told me, are you going to go to that next webinar? There's been tons of, both my professional organizations and our benefit providers have been giving us opportunity to participate in training, to have legal counsel in those training, providing us with insight to the massive regulations and changes and how all of this is to be taken care of. Anything with the IRS is never easy. Payroll is also working with us, with our payroll provider, and much like we do a W-2 at the end of the year, creating mechanisms in our payroll process to be able to collect that data automatically and do their reporting. But in the first year, I'm a little nervous about just accepting that. And so we're doing our own tracking. And hopefully, we'll use it just as an audit at the end of the process and make sure that our provider has made it nice and clean for us. But definitely, training has been provided to my staff and to payroll through those webinars and opportunity to talk to attorneys. And with staff, I believe that our supervisors are really comfortable now because we actually changed from our full-time status over a year ago. And we've been monitoring their scheduling of our part-timers to make sure they stay within that threshold and educating them a year and a year and a half before we ever reach this deadline date. So we're well-prepared for that.
Any, any? Would you use the microphone?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That HR component will allow us to have some compliance training.
Yeah, are you hearing that? Barb said that the Holman Group, as part of their services in our package, is that there's an HR premium package, they call it, that's part of our contract that gives me direct access to their employment attorneys as well. So they can assist with any questions that we might have as we go through that process. And they provide all kinds of training resources and materials for us to use in a number of human resource-related topics.
And specifically also for ACA compliance.
Very good.
You have to repeat that so it goes on our TVs.
And she said, and their training materials specifically include ACA, Affordable Care Act, and the processing and the completion of those complicated forms at year-end.
Laura? I'm sorry, Michael?
Yeah, I just had a few questions. One was on the Employee Assistance Program. Is that brand-new? Or is that an upgrade from what we've had before?
Very good question. We have had, I would recall, more of a referral program. It's referred to as an EAP through UNOM. And they are the provider that gives us our short-term and long-term disability. It's free, no cost to us. It's part of our short-term, long-term disability package and we're going to keep that. But it really is much more a referral-for-life element. So my child is going off to college. I need help in finding a college where that meets our needs and the criteria. They would refer them to some providers, but did not provide this level of costing benefit to employees. So this is definitely much richer than a true Employee Assistance Program. We've never had the performance management component before. Last year, I had a couple of unique employee situations that were, I needed that professional expertise and I didn't have it through UNOM. And now we'll have that resource available to us.
No, I like it. I think it's a great addition to the Human Resources package. And I am glad to see that you've reduced your workman's comp by, what was it, 15%?
Yes, I really have to say thank you to the department heads. We implemented a monthly report and I share that each month with them. It brings light to what is happening. Sometimes you just don't see it and you don't think about it. As well as the safety committee and educational opportunities and the change that we made with seat belts, for example. We also partnered with Safe Personnel and we have free online training now on safety courses. Diane's been awesome with that as well. We've been going out to the shops and the departments as part of performance evaluations. Where I'm seeing that supervisors are having employees go out to Safe Personnel and complete that education as well. So all of that initiative that we took this last year to try to combat shows a 15% reduction in our losses, which is great.
Yeah, and I assume, and I'll ask since the chief is not here, a majority or a large portion of that may have been through the police department?
Yes, they are one of our main customers. Yes. The other thing that we did is, for the first time ever, I've wanted to accomplish it for four years since I've been here. This year, we finally got it accomplished and that was to hire a medical review officer. So we have our own primary care physician that employees go directly to now. And so that has eliminated a lot of costs with the ER. You don't have to go to the ER now. You can go to our primary care physician. The officers can get in and out within 30 minutes with that dedicated resource. Getting them back out into the field as quickly as medically possible has really cut down on our loss and productivity time.
Yeah, very good. Well, I commend you on that, very good. Thank you, Mike. Any other questions, Laura?
Did our wellness program also contribute to the reduction in lost hours?
I really can't say that for sure. I do think that we're starting to really experience a shift in our culture with employees about wellness, that they're actually excited about it and more so than I've seen before in talking about it. I actually told Larry, I'll take a little bit of the blame for the 31% utilization. And Dr. Bill's Barb told me not to worry about it. But I think that employees are aware. You know what? I've never gone and had an annual physical or I've never gone and had this or that done. And now when I go, my doc tells me, you're over 50 and you've got to go do this test and that test and this test and that test. And so because of wellness, that I think some employees have gotten to the doctor that they hadn't seen for some time. So it's probably a small fraction. It's certainly not the high claim cost, so, but anyways.
Larry, you got a question?
I just have a comment, well, in regards to the wellness. Even though, you know, I deal with that where I work too. But, you know, it's a preventive program and I still think that it's very important because we cannot go day-to-day-to-day and not get some healthcare and look and see, you know, where we're at. If we can catch a problem early, then we won't end up in a bigger catastrophe later on. So the wellness program is an amazing program. So I love it and I'm glad you implement it. And you guys both, just great job with that. I just love what I see on there, so it's a good program.
Barbara, you got a comment? Would you use the microphone, Barbara, so everybody can hear?
Wellness program is always a long-term goal.
Yeah, it is. And it's just great because, like I said, a lot of us don't even know these things that we should do at certain ages. And by doing the little ones, then all of a sudden, we realize we do these. And it all works for the betterment, you know.
It's a matter of awareness.
It is, yes. So it's great.
One thing that we just talked about in the department head meeting just today was that we're looking at moving Volunteer Central up to the third floor. So they'll be more visible and part of high traffic. And then with that space down on the first floor, using it for employees and for wellness opportunities there with the lactation room for mothers, or rest area for an employee if they're sick over their lunch break that they can go to, have their lunch down there in peace and quiet and make a comfortable space for employees to be able to go. As well as, we have a few pieces of equipment that was donated. Richard helped with that. And we'll move those pieces there as well. So if over their lunch hour, they want to jump on a bike, a stationary bike, they can do that down on first floor.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you for your time.
You're doing a great job, I appreciate that. Barbara, that was so good to see you. And thanks for the good news. Okay, we move on then to Capital Projects, Chapter 9. Kim, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Kim Moon, Capital Projects Coordinator, here to present a brief overview of capital projects and capital equipment and the proposed budget for the upcoming year. The town's financial policies specify that capital outlay is defined as capital equipment having a cost of $3,000 or more and a useful life of one year or more. Capital projects have a cost of $25,000 or more and a useful life of at least two years. In 2007, the town's budget included over $53 million worth of capital, about half of the town's budget that year. In 2011, the town's budget included less than $8 million of capital, only about 13% that year. In fiscal year 2015, 2016, the proposed capital outlay is $17.4 million, or about a fourth of the budget for the fiscal year across all town departments and funds, as shown in the colorful pie chart called, "Where Does the Money Go?" in the Financial Overview, Section 4, on page 4-2. The Prescott Valley Town Budget has five major funds. The General Fund in Chapter 6, for general services associated with local government and provides only about 7% of capital. The Enterprise Fund is for water and wastewater only, funded by customer-user charges and it provides about 23% of capital. The Capital Improvement Fund in Chapter 9, known as the Streets Capital Project Fund or the 1/3 cent sales tax, is 1/3 of the town's 2.33 TPT tax and is only for major street improvements. This fund provides 30% of the town's capital needs. The Debt Service Fund in Chapter 8 is for repayment of town debt, except for enterprise debt. And while it includes repayment of previous capital outlay obligations, it does not include any current capital outlay. The Special Revenue Fund in Chapter 7 provides about 40% of town capital needs. The Replacement Fund is for future replacement of vehicles and major equipment. The Highway User Revenues Fund, also called HERF, is the town's allocation of the state gas tax and is only for streets and highways. Notably, HERF funds only about 2% of capital needs because most of HERF is used for pavement maintenance, such as chip seal, and not for capital. The UNS Facilities Relocation Fund, which accumulates 2% of Unisource gas revenues in addition to franchise fees, is for annual reimbursement of gas relocations in the town's public right-of-way. It represents 2% of our capital costs. The NCU Donation Fund funds less than 1% of our capital needs. The Impact Fee Fund, also called the Development Impact Fee Fund, or DIF, is from the construction of new homes and businesses and can only be used for population growth expansion as detailed in the Infrastructure Improvement Plan. It funds about 14% of capital needs. And the last special revenue fund is the Grant Fund, which is for all grants received across all departments and provides for about 22% of capital outlay needs. Note that some of the budgeted grants are confirmed while some are potential placeholders for grants awaiting confirmation of receipt. Now let's quickly look at capital highlights for each department. The Public Works Department capital outlay this year is over $9 million for 12 projects and 11 equipment purchases. As mentioned in Norm's presentation yesterday, noteworthy highlights include the Viewpoint Drive floodplain study at $500,000 from the Yavapai County Flood Control District in the General Fund. Viewpoint Drive intersection improvements at Spouse Drive with the 3rd cent sales tax. Lake Shore Drive improvements from Lake Valley Road to Glossford Hill Road, including a roundabout at Civic Circle with the 3rd cent sales tax. Win Song Drive pedestrian improvements with a $300,000 CDBG grant plus a grant match of $108,000 from the 3rd cent sales tax. Expansion of the traffic signal at Glossford Hill Road and Long Look Drive near Broadshaw Mountain High School with development impact fees. A new 12-ton dump truck to replace a 20-year-old dump truck that has over 600,000 miles with HERF monies. The Utilities Department capital outlay is almost $4 million for 23 projects and 10 equipment purchases. In just a few minutes, Neil Wadsworth and John Mundelow will present the various water funds, including notable projects such as the Crossroads Waterline Improvements, Roundup Drive Sewer Line Improvements, a new garage building at the Wastewater Treatment Plant to house the Vector Truck, ongoing participation in the Big Chino Water Resource Project and Comprehensive Agreement Number 1. There's also a wastewater model study that is not classified as a capital expense. The Parks and Recreation Department capital outlay is over $1.1 million for four projects and 10 equipment purchases. As Brian Woody mentioned yesterday in his presentation, highlights include Bob Edwards Park with development impact fees, playground equipment and audiovisual equipment for the civic stage from NCU donation funds. The Community Development Department capital outlay is over $1.5 million for one small equipment purchase and a potential Department of Homeland Security grant for an Excella software website for regional civic database coordination that Richard Parker discussed yesterday. The Police Department capital outlay is almost $1 million for one small building renovation and over a dozen equipment purchases, including new police patrol vehicles for new patrol officers from development impact fees and replacement police vehicles in the General Fund with a transfer from the Replacement Fund. Chief Gerald will likely discuss police vehicles and equipment in more detail later this evening. In the Management Services Department, the IT Division has two equipment purchases for $45,000. The Executive Management Department, including Channel 9, has two equipment purchases for $23,000. Another noteworthy project is the right-of-way acquisition from the Arizona State Land Department, a cooperative project between the Parks Department, the Utilities Department, and the Streets Public Works Department. I do want to note that many of this year's budgeted capital equipment purchases are for equipment replacements that were delayed due to the economic downturn and they are not necessarily new capital equipment. In total, across all funds and all departments, there are over 50 equipment purchases and 42 capital projects totaling $17.4 million of capital outlay for fiscal year 1516. In Chapter 9 of the budget book is the Five-Year Capital Plan for Equiments and Projects. This is the planning for future outlay where the town department matches funding projections with capital need projections. Also in Chapter 9, there are detail sheets for many of the highlighted capital projects that I mentioned in the summary presentation. In closing, I want to say that Prescott Valley Town Council, Administration, Departments do a very good job meeting the needs of our community with the available funds. Thank you.
Questions, anyone? Mary?
No, just, you're absolutely right. This town does a great job in what they do with the funds that we have to work with. Fabulous job, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Kim, keep up the good work, appreciate that. Okay, we go on to number C, reclaimed water and water services resource recharge. Neil and John, who's up first?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Mundelow, Water Resources Manager for the town of Prescott Valley. There's really not a lot to talk about as far as any changes to our operating budget for the Water Resources Recharge Fund. I will say that we caught a late entry error that will change some of the line items within the budget, but it doesn't change the net budget at the end. Notably, I guess, we have an increase to our Comprehensive Agreement Number 1, which is our agreement with Salt River Project and Town of Prescott Valley, City of Prescott and Town of Prescott Valley, of course, as we had a budget that we agreed to back in 2012 that ramps up costs for a few years to do the watershed monitoring, hydrologic monitoring and modeling components of that. So that increased this year and it will increase again next year before going back down. Finally, I guess, we could talk a little bit about the Upper Verde River Watership Protection Coalition. Just so you understand, the monies in that budget are only from either the membership dues or from grants. So these are not extra dollars that the town puts into that. We did receive notice of award of a $1 million grant recently and completed that grant agreement. But interestingly enough, even though we're the fiscal manager, we don't physically take that money into our accounts. It remains within the granting agency account and we direct kind of how it's spent. And so we will continue to increase revenues for that account through various granting attempts. I guess with that, if there are any other questions or comments, Mayor?
Questions, anyone? Larry?
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to share with you that John was truly in his element today when speaking to 207th graders and did a really good job of entertaining them and actually keeping them quiet.
If I could comment, I did want to mention that staff really appreciate council support of the mental health component. of the mental health component because we believe the town manager will benefit greatly from that.
Any words in your defense, Larry?
Really not in public, but the defense will happen, and he will pay for such a remark. Ryan made me do it.
Yeah, I think you're in deep trouble. Larry says see him in his office at seven in the morning.
Oh, John's her way.
Anyway, any other questions, comments, anyone?
Thank you, Mayor.
John, you've done an outstanding job. Appreciate that. Okay, next, Neil.
Well, good evening. I'm just going to follow up real quickly to John's discussion on the recharge and the reclaimed water systems in terms of the operating budget. You'll see that for our contract with CH Two-M-Hill, those values went up by three percent. The only other thing that you'll note that you may question would be on electricity. And for the reclaimed water and the recharge, previously, we had divided those up a little bit differently, but the total for last year was about a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars. They were just divided up a little bit differently between the two. It still adds up to the same amount this year. We've just split them evenly, sixty-five-thousand between each of the two. And so that's why you'll see one looks like it goes up quite a bit, and the other one went down quite a bit. So that's what that is. Other than that, I really don't have any other comments on recharge or reclaimed water.
Questions, anyone? Comments? John, Neil, that was good news there, I think. I think you're doing just great. Keep those electric bills down. Any other comments, anyone? Anything else, Neil?
You want me to start talking about water and wastewater?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so I am looking at the wastewater budget. Again, overall, for our contract with OMI, that is at a three-percent increase. We did have, I believe our power costs go up a little bit significantly on wastewater side. Went from a hundred, well, five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand to five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. We're actually doing a fair amount of work down at the treatment plant this year, and we're going to do a little bit more next year, and you're going to see that in under some of the special projects where we've got a hundred thousand for wastewater treatment plant control modifications. And we're doing a lot of work to automate things so that the power that we're using is more related to the incoming plant flow. So when we need more air in the system is typically when we have more water coming to the plant. And even though our plant was somewhat automated when we did the expansion in 2007, there were some things that were not done that we have been improving on. And so we've been going through, doing a lot of work related to that, automating it and tying it into our SCADA. I believe that you approved some mixers back in December, which was going to take, replace the air that we're using for mixing, and we're going to replace those with mixers so that we don't have to use our blowers as much. Those will be installed. They haven't been installed yet, but those are going to be installed here shortly. And so we believe that actually the power costs, we're hoping next year are going to actually be less than they are this year. We budgeted five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars because that's what the trend is showing, but we believe that we're going to come in under budget on that. We may be even at the five-hundred-and-thirty or less mark. And so we're budgeting for the worst-case scenario, but we're actually very optimistic that that number is going to go down a bit. Most of our other costs stayed relatively stable. Bio solids was another area where we've plugged in an increase from two-hundred-and-forty-thousand to three-hundred-thousand, so that was a fairly substantial increase. Part of that is that the budget at two-hundred-and-forty-thousand right now, we're actually going to be above that by the end of this fiscal year, and we're going to be moving some dollars around within our budget this year to cover that, and we've got the money to cover it. But the two-hundred-and-forty wasn't an adequate number to hit that full thing, and we did see some increases from waste management. So three-hundred-thousand is what we've got budgeted for this next fiscal year. In terms of large projects, we do have in here a Roundup Drive Gravity Sewer Main at one-point-six-million dollars. We're doing the design this year, and that money's in there as a placeholder for right now. We do need to do this work. Don't know if we need to do it this next year or not, and if we don't have to, we will hold off on that. We are in the process of doing some flow monitoring or getting some flow monitoring contract approved, and we may be coming to talk to you about that. And to actually evaluate what the flows in that specific pipe are, it's one of our critical lines, one of the backbones of our system, and so we're going to get some updated flow numbers on that this year to see where we are in terms of overall utilized capacity. So we'll know more on that one in another month and a half, I think. And then we've got some normal-type equipment that we've budgeted for, that we budget for every year for repairs and replacements and things like that. There's one that's of interest in here. It's called the SL RAT Sewer Assessment Tool for thirty-five-thousand dollars, and you probably have no idea what that is. But it was pretty interesting. Right now, when we want to do an assessment on a sewer line, we take the camera van out, we insert it in, we run the camera down the line, we see what the problems are, find out if there's any blockages that we need to clean. And so doing that for one segment of pipe, it can take half an hour or longer because by the time you get the equipment out there and get it all set up and everything, you know, you've got a half an hour to an hour invested in doing that videoing of that four-hundred-foot of pipe. This SL RAT is actually a sonic-type piece of equipment where you put a transmitter in one manhole and a receiver in a second manhole. It takes about five minutes to put these things in. You turn it on and you leave it on for two minutes, and it sends sound waves from one to the other, and based on what the transmitter picks up, it'll tell you whether you've got a blockage in that line. So even though you haven't looked at it physically with a camera and spent the time to look at it, it'll tell you whether it's partially blocked, completely blocked, or if you have other issues. So we can go through and do a survey, a larger survey of our system quicker, and then focus our cammering efforts on the ones where we find we have problems. So hopefully that's going to be an efficiency tool for us, allow us to do things quicker. Other than that, yeah, I don't know if you have any other specific questions?
Laura?
I just have a curiosity question. I meant to ask last year and forgot. Your item for landscaping, is that just maintaining what exists there because it's always almost the same?
The item under landscaping is actually for weed control, pesticide application. We pay part of the contract that Public Works has for doing that, for the medians and stuff, and we do that at some of our facilities as well.
Other questions? Larry?
The Mayor and Council, just a couple of things. When we were talking earlier, John, there's been a request to, at a work study coming up soon, to go into a full-blown presentation because Mayor and Council are getting some questions about what resources for some of the new construction that people are saying. And so we'll set that up on a work study. And a thought occurs to me, would you be interested in a work-study trip down to the millions of dollars you've got invested in the wastewater treatment plant prior to approving the new OMI contract? If you are interested in that, we can certainly do that either on a work-study or individually if you don't want to dedicate a work-study to it.
Council, your thoughts? Eddie?
I've been there twice, so I don't think I have to visit it again.
Rick?
Thank you.
Okay.
I bet you I've been there eight times.
Mary?
Been there, done there.
Okay. Mike? Steve? Is this, that?
Sorry, Neil.
It's so much fun!
Could you serve lunch?
We do, we can, yes. You probably won't want to eat it, though.
You did serve lunch the last time. That was about twenty years ago.
Hepatobismol or Alka-Seltzer, what was it? Never mind.
It's certainly important that we know that OMI, on our behalf, is doing a very good job of maintaining that fifty-plus-million dollars' worth of investment we've got down there. The last time I went through, things were in very good shape, so I'm proud of what OMI's been doing.
Don't take any of it personally.
All right.
Neil, if you serve lunch, I think they'll do it.
Did last time, we can do it again.
Okay.
All right, no questions on the wastewater?
No.
Okay, thank you, Neil.
How about water side? Do you want to talk about water now?
Go ahead.
All right. So that's on, there's a summary on page ten-dash-fifteen, and then it gets into the detail next page over. Like I said, the contract with OMI, three-percent increase. Electricity is staying flat, and that's due to, a couple of years ago, we did a few things with the SCADA system to make those controls more automated. We also changed some rates a number of years ago, so we've actually flattened that side out, and that's what we're hoping to happen on the wastewater side now. So that is no increase there. I don't think under operations I have much else to talk about. Everything else is pretty much the same. We do have the undermined equipment. We have a little over five-hundred-thousand budgeted, and that is for the continuation of the FlexNet radio read meters that we've been installing. We've been doing somewhere between fifteen-hundred and two-thousand a year. We're going to continue to do that, and hopefully we'll have that done in another couple of years here, be done, completely done with it. A couple of months back, we talked here about doing an outscope services agreement with OMI for putting a tower up at the tank site right there behind Home Depot. That tower is up, and we are getting the actual antennas installed, the little directional and broadcast antennas up there. When that's done, that will be the last piece in terms of what we need for communications for covering the whole town. We did have some areas that we couldn't actually get, that the meters would not communicate if they were in that particular area. This basically improves that coverage. And as an added benefit, I believe the Police Department is also going to be using that tower to improve their coverage. So that's almost done. In terms of capital equipment, Kim mentioned the crossroads water line. We have a water line out in front of crossroads that, unbeknownst to us, and as that area was being built up with the crossroads going in, we ended up with a water, an existing water line in that area that is now twenty feet deep or more, and it developed a leak in it, and we could not fix it. And so we shut it off. Fortunately, we had a little bit of redundancy in that area, so it's been shut off for a couple of months now, and we need to get that line back in service. So the intent is that we will not repair it or anything. We're just going to go back in and put in another water line at a more shallow depth, and it's going to take a little bit of money because we've got a bore under the road there in front of the entrance to Sam's Club. So that's what that one is. Chlorine containment, we're budgeting a hundred thousand dollars, and that'll buy us approximately ten automatic shut-off valves for our chlorine systems at our wellheads so that if there's a leak detected in the chlorine, the valve detects the leak and it automatically shuts the bottles off. So those are just safety things that we're getting put in at all of our well sites. We did, I believe, five of them last year, and so this will hopefully do ten, and then we'll have maybe another seven or eight to have all the wells completely done. We're going to buy another Trimble unit, which is our, what we use for mapping our system. It's like a GPS, a very accurate GPS, and in fact, it's more accurate than the ones we've been using because when we get into a cloudy day or whatever, there's many times where the ones that we have won't work very accurately. And so these newer ones have a whole lot more accuracy, and they'll work under a cloudy day. You can use them when you're standing under trees and all kinds of other, you know, in the shadow of a building where the satellite might be over here and you're next to the building. The newer ones actually are able to maintain accuracy in those types of situations, so that's another twelve thousand we're putting in. We've got a mini excavator for forty thousand dollars to assist with, you know, what we've been using in our, in the back easements and such. And I don't know if there's any, anything else that you're interested in talking about? Most of the, a lot of the other projects are kind of standard, ongoing things that we do every year, tank rehabilitation and well rehabilitation, those types of things.
Covered everything? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank you for the efficiency and how often you plan ahead to prevent issues occurring, and I've watched that happen year after year after year. I think it's important that we just don't notice it, but we comment on it and thank you for the efficiency of your department and the excellence of your management.
Thank you. A lot of that credit has to go to Mark Kirin. You know, he does an outstanding job in keeping his fingers on what's going on on a day-to-day basis and...
I understand, but we'll trust you to pass it on.
I will do that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anything else on the water and utilities?
Certainly not, unless you have any questions.
Other questions? Yeah, be sure and let Mark know we appreciate it too. Thank you, Neil. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to legal, page six, one-seventeen.
Ivan? You know, I was hoping you guys would want a field trip to the legal department. You know, we have a little place there for apples and bananas and oranges and thought you might want to come by. And by, every once in a while, somebody will put some candy out, get my ire up, but, well, we have a new person. If you've walked through there, you've seen that now we have Irma Hernandez in the office where Jan Baer used to sit, and we've now had Irma there for two months? I think two months. She came from utility billing, if I remember right, and she's just really just taken to it, done very well. She and Bob and Cindy and Susan are all keeping that criminal division clipping along, and there's a lot of laughter that comes out of there. I'm, you know, every once in a while, I feel like I'm not doing my job very well because they're just way too happy. Yeah, they're having way too much fun there. And so, you know, I still have one of those, I think I got this from John Mundelow once. I think he gave us a banner that said the beatings will continue until morale improves. And I think that was one of his, what was that, a pirate? That was a pirate thing, wasn't it? Yeah, so anyway, other than that, the legal department just kind of, each year, it's pretty much the same stuff. The only thing that really changes with us is that some years we spend that money that we budget for outside counsel, and some years we don't. And, you know, Bill Kopey likes to just clobber me if we go over that amount, but he never gives me a lot of, you know, praise when I go under that amount. Anyway, fortunately, last year, we spent very little of it and hope to do that again, but we just never know. Steven, you see Steven here every once in a while? I try to, you know, oh, come on, I can't be dishonest. Every once in a while, I say, Steven, I got things to do. Would you go cover for me there at the meeting? And he's always quite willing to do so, and I figure you kind of like his smiling face anyway. So, you know, when people are in, when they go through our department, they always stop and talk with Steven, but very few people stop and talk with me. I've kind of wondered why, and then I remembered, Steven is just the most gregarious soul I have ever encountered. That guy can talk your ear off without even giving it half an effort. So Steven's got more friends in more places than you can even imagine. I'll talk with him about something, and he'll say, well, I happen to know, blah, blah, blah. blah, blah, so-and-so. And if you'd like, I could make a call, you know? I don't have an, nobody knows me.
Speaking of talking, Ivan, isn't it true you guys like to say in a hundred words or more what anybody else could say?
You know, that's really true. Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to be, you don't want to short people on words. You know, words are always available, so we want to make sure we give as many as we can. Can I answer any questions at all about the budget?
Yeah, Laura?
I have one. What have you done with Ivan? You're smiling and everything.
I'm smiling? Oh, darn, darn, going to ruin, ruin the reputation.
It's so nice to see you not all tensed up, Ivan.
Marty?
Well, if you change the location of your door, because your door is sideways and his is that way, so, you know, when you walk past his office, it's wide open, and his desk is right there. You sort of hide behind your wall there.
Yeah, again, I can't be dishonest. I'm actually kind of happy that it's that way. Steven, Steven loves for people to talk to him. I'm usually got, you know, my nose in something, and I'm just as happy to sit there.
You've now opened the can of worms, you do know that.
I know, I know, I know. So you'll be in there to, to give me a hard time. Well, that's probably true. Make sure that I stay awake. Larry tries to do that every once in a while as well.
I noticed you shift your, all your papers to his office.
I, yeah. To Steven's office?
We may have to get code enforcement. Any other comments or questions, anyone?
We appreciate you.
Keep it up, Ivan, you do a great job. Mary?
We know you.
Mike?
Yeah, I just had one thought. Do you foresee anything on the horizon that may occupy some time that you're not anticipating right now? You know, like in the good old days of CFDs, things like that.
Sure, you always see some storm clouds on the horizon.
Yeah.
Yeah. Come talk to me, and I'll talk to you about storm clouds.
Steve? No? Ivan, thank you, and keep up the good work. Okay, we go on and do F, Police Department, Chief Gerald, six, one seventy-three.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope to make this kind of short. Everything in my budget this year was actually previewed in the report to council that was requested prior to the beginning of the budget preparation cycle. So everything in my budget tried to address most of those needs. I gave everybody a summary sheet before, when we came in, and it pretty much highlights where the, the changes are. We did get a three percent operating increase like all other departments. However, we came in at about six point three over last year's budget, which is a little bit higher than the three percent allowed. To account for that was primarily about twenty-nine thousand dollars of additional equipment and clothing for the five officers that were authorized by council, twenty-seven thousand dollars for tasers. If you remember in the report to council, I talked about the fact that our tasers are anywhere from ten to twelve years old, way beyond their serviceable lives. And so we need to start replacing them, and this will give me about a quarter of the current allotment, and this will replace about a quarter of them, so we're going to hopefully be on a four-year plan to get them all replaced. That's our, our goal anyhow. The rest of the increases are pretty much due to price increases beyond our control. For example, ammunition and evidence supplies, it's unfortunately a need that we have. We have to have bullets for our officers and evidence supplies to take care of the evidence that comes in. We also added about five thousand dollars in software updates for the patrol cars to try to hopefully speed up the, the processing of different things from the CAD system. In addition to that, we had our capital fund. So the development impact fees are paying for about three vehicles to the tune of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That is for the additional five officers that the council approved. And then there's an additional five vehicles that we're getting as just part of the rotation and replacement of vehicles, again, that was noted in the report to council. The other extremely important capital expenditure that we're doing this year is almost twenty thousand dollars for a video surveillance camera system in our evidence and property room. It's something that's been lacking for a long time, and we all know some of the consequences of not having one, and so that, that's an important expenditure. One of the other exciting things that we're starting to move towards, and I wish Casey Danner was here tonight because he'd talk about it with us, but we're also moving right now to a cloud-based evidence storage system for our digital media, so video and audio recordings. We're going to be moving that to a company called Evidence.com, which is also part of TASER, and it's a cloud-based storage system, so it's going to really free up a lot of space that we're kind of running out of right now in our property and evidence room. And as always, within my three percent, we, we really focus a lot of it into our training budget, because I can't stress how important it is to keep especially our supervisors and command officers trained, especially in light of what you see going on around the As always, we continually try to seek alternative funding sources whenever possible. To that end, we have received preliminary approval for approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars in homeland security funding. One of the other concerns noted in the report to council was our communications upgrades that are absolutely vital, and they're absolutely necessary. So the sixty-seven thousand dollars will be used to do a lot of those upgrades that are necessary for our communications, as well as emergency operations center equipment upgrades. So in the event we do have an emergency that we need to activate the EOC, we're going to have good updated equipment there. And also, we received some funding for some regional training for which Prescott Valley will be the lead agency during that training. As we move into the future with the department and the town, hopefully, well, the town will be growing, and hopefully the department will be growing with it, now would be a good and responsible time to start investigating the possibility of the COPS-MORE grants, because this is where the federal government will fund new officers for two years and up to three years if they are veterans. So those are some things that we're going to be looking at in the future.
Chief?
Yes.
Sorry, what was that called again?
It's the COPS-MORE grant, or COPS hiring grants.
COPS-MORE?
C-O-P-E-S, MORE, M-O-R-E. Don't ask me what it stands for. As always, we, my staff and myself, take the responsibility of this budget very seriously, and to that end, we continue to evaluate our processes and our organizational structure to become more efficient and more cost-effective at the same time. And I think if, I think everybody was emailed recently, our new organizational structure, and I think you'll agree that it's much more streamlined and has better reporting relationships. And in the end, it actually saves money by reallocating our staffing and, I don't know, I don't want to call it downgrading, but certainly restructuring some of the positions. So with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to run over and get my book and try to answer them for you.
Good question. Mike?
Yeah, I was interested, I think, I asked last year about the communication. So what, what are some of the things you hope to do with that money to upgrade your communication?
The big problem is, well, twofold. Number one, it's getting old, and it's getting outdated. So the other thing is it's starting to break down. The second problem is, is the town continues to grow through annexation over the past few years and things like that, the footprint of the coverage has changed. And so what we're hoping to accomplish is completely upgrading it, and I think it's a total of, I want to say a hundred and seventy-five thousand to do that. So this is a good start towards that.
So that new tower that we're putting up near Home Depot, you're going to be using that, will that help at all?
That I don't know. I'm not sure. I think we're up on top of the hill, so...
Yeah, right.
And down at the country club, we have equipment down there as well.
Yeah.
Larry?
Yeah, just a comment, as the chief commented on the reorganization, we were going through the numbers, and with the five new officers that are planned for in this budget, this will bring us back up to the highest level of sworn officers in the history of the town. Okay, so that's important to understand. In addition to that, when you take a look at the allocations, as we did on Tuesday, what the chief had identified when he first came here about moving some folk around to get more officers out on the street, that's happening. And it's abundantly clear when looking at the deployment of the officers we had, that we have not only moved in that direction, but committed to that type of policing.
Any other comments, Laura?
I, I just wanted to share, I had a conversation with one of your officers this week, and he, he wanted me to understand how happy he was here and how impressed he is with the department and with the town, and that he's telling his other sworn officer friends about us. I don't think there's a greater compliment that can be paid to you, and I wanted to make sure you had that information.
Well, I appreciate that, but I'll be honest with you, it's not just me. I think all I can do is introduce a philosophy and try to lead a certain way, but if I don't get buy-in, then it's not going to be successful. And my staff and this department at a whole, and I'm talking about sworn and non-s sworn people, have really embraced the philosophy, and I think it's created just a tremendous working environment.
Thank you for your humility, but you're the newer guy on the block, and you earned that compliment, so please accept it.
Thank you.
Rick, no comment? Any other comments, anyone? Larry, anything else? Chief, anything else?
No, thank you for your continued support. We, we, and I do mean we, everybody in the police department is very excited about it. They received the, I don't know what you call it, the Larry and Karen Show. And this past weekend, it was very positive, and it was very well-received. I think everybody in the police department is very happy with the direction we're going.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. You keep up the good work. Okay, we move on to G, debt service, page eight dash four, Mr. Kope.
Good evening. On chapter eight to page two, this is where that slide is from. Actually, it's on, I'm going to start on eight-two. What I want to point out, like Larry said at the very beginning, this is where our detail of our obligations are for the town's debt, both governmental and enterprise. So you can see, we have a little over fifty-six million dollars left in principal and around twelve million dollars left in interest. So overall, we're at sixty-eight million. It's significantly, like Larry pointed out at the beginning yesterday, significantly lower than where we were five, six years ago. So we pay pretty much close to five, five to six million dollars a year in principal. So you can just take my basic math, you can see, we have approximately eleven more years of debt that's still left to be paid on, on all of our debt, both enterprise and government bonds, so, which is, I think, is positive. Couple of things I do want to point on in this, on page eight-two, you can see when some of the bonds are expiring. So in our two thousand four refunding, that's basically our police department and the civic center. We took those two bond issues, we consolidated them, then we refinanced them. It's going to be paid off in two thousand eighteen. So those two buildings will be debt-free, so...
That's awesome.
I think that's, I think that's, that's pretty good.
That's great.
The other thing, I think the other one that's actually I really like, or that I'm pretty excited about too, is the water refunding.
Yes.
That was the Shamrock, when we purchased Shamrock, and all the water infrastructure that went with it, that one will be paid off in two thousand nineteen. So another few years, and I think that's huge for us.
That is really, really exciting.
And as a community.
And Mayor and Council, just as a comment on that, I know that we all struggled, and particularly the mayor, struggled with the purchase of Shamrock Water for years, decades, quite frankly, and it was pulled off thanks to the hard effort negotiation of Ken Retmer and all the documents that Ivan had put together back in the day. But as much as we troubled over the purchase price of fifteen million dollars and then seven million dollars' worth of repairs and upgrades, that's the cheapest water we've ever bought.
So then on page eight-three, and this is where the top part of this slide comes from, this page right here is just our governmental debt. So this is the MPC bonds and the, the bonds for the library. You can see we have budgeted around four point two million dollars in principal and interest this year. Majority of this is going to be paid by the general fund. This is where most of the money comes from. The library is typically paid from, seventy-five percent of it's come from the cultural impact fees. If there isn't enough money there, then basically the general fund will advance the money to cover the shortfall. So there is a advance or receivable, payable that's really due from the, the library fund or the cultural impact fee fund back to the general fund. And unfortunately, because of the number of permits that are being issued, right now there isn't quite enough money being collected to make the annual debt service payment from that fund. So again, every year, the general fund will have to advance a little bit of money to the cultural fund to cover that payment. So at some point, we hope that the money will start, you know, stop coming from the general fund and then start going back. So someday, we hope.
What's a little?
It varies between half a million and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The one thing that is not listed on here, but is contained in all the enterprise funds are the debt service related to either the water treatment plant or, like I just said, basically the, our water system. So those principal and interest payments are typically around three and a half million dollars. And one of the important parts of this is that this is what generates or drives what our utility rates will need to be. Those bond covenances that are currently in place with the water and wastewater, it's all driven around the debt service. So that's one of the things, like I said, I'll be, will be coming back to you sometime in late June or early July to give you the results of that. With that, that's kind of a brief overview of our debt service obligations. Answer any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone? Mary? No? It sounded like we're making progress.
Yes.
Larry, any comment? Good job, Bill. Let's go on then to our CFDs. We'll start with Stone Ridge, I guess, is the first one?
Okay.
Is it East Ridge?
Community facilities.
Stone Ridge?
No, it's community facility is the first one on this. Which one do you want to start with?
I'll go with any order you want me to go.
Good name it, we'll go by your order.
I can go. Will we start with the good news first?
Yeah.
All right, we'll start with Stone Ridge, actually.
It's only good news.
We'll start backwards and we'll go forward, I guess, but Stone Ridge, one of the changes that did occur this year, there was a Proposition 117, I think it passed, it was the last year, year before, but actually, the results went into effect this year. One of the, the results of that change or that proposition was that there's no longer, like in secondary taxes, you used to have an unlimited increase. You could, it just, you know, the change of the value could go from five percent or ten percent decrease to twenty percent increase in one year. Well, this limited that now. So even though, like, right now, I still got a report from the county says, "Well, under your old's method, the Stone Ridge CFD would have went up twenty-eight percent." Well, we're not allowed to use that anymore, so your new number is actually an eight percent increase. So they're reducing the increase in the assessed value, they're limiting the increase to no more than ten percent in a year. So you won't start seeing these, these huge increases or fluctuations in their values anymore going forward. So, but still, on the, on the good news, this year, the assessed value is twenty point three million. Last year was nineteen point five. So it has gone up, like I said, it went up only three point seven percent, though. But it's still, it still went up, though, right? One of the things I do want to point out is that, you know, we do have a rental, we have another source of income, the rental income, so we always apply that toward the debt service. And also because, I guess, this is where the, how the money comes in, we do have some extra cash that was left over. So this year, I'm applying, we have sixty-five thousand dollars left over, so I'm also applying that toward the annual debt service payment. So this year, the good news is that the rate will go to two dollars and seventy-four cents total.
Oh, my gosh.
That's includes principal, what's, what's set aside for the debt service, and then the O and M. So it's at two seventy-four. Last year was three eighteen. So it's still, it's gone down by thirteen point eight percent.
That's awesome, that's wonderful.
So that's what, that's, that's why I started with the good news. So that's what, that's, that's why I started with the good news first.
Okay. All right, now let's move on.
So with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions.
I just wanna make sure everybody understands how long it's been since we've had good news about Stoneridge CFD.
Yeah, no.
We can hardly accept it.
Just keep it up, Bill. How about we go to Pronghorn then?
Okay, Pronghorn's good. Quillwood would be the next one if you wanted to go in, in good order. Yeah, I would go to Quillwood after this one. Um, Pronghorn, there's, there's secondary assessed value increased to thirteen point eight million. Last year was twelve point eight. So there's an increase of approximately eight percent. So again, that's a, it's very favorable for the residents that live out there. We also have the successor and interest charge and that's based on the number of homes and permits that are pulled. Right now, I'm, I'm budgeting twenty-eight homes to be built out there next year. Now they're, I think they're going, based on Richard's estimates, they're doing a lot more than that. Any extra money that we receive will then be set aside and then applied toward next year's debt service payment. So that's, and just like this year, I have eighty-six thousand dollars extra cash sitting in the Pronghorn CFDs, which I will be applying toward their annual debt service payment. So I guess the good news on this one is they are going to be at three dollars and twelve cents this year. And last year it was four dollars. So again, they're also going, I, I, at least, I'm not sure, it's hard to tell, you know, what the effect will be on all of the residents out there because of the homes, fluctuation of their values and that. But, you know, overall, I think that a lot of the residents out there should see a decrease in, in their tax bill.
That's good.
Yep, I think so.
That's good. Awesome.
Any other questions about Pronghorn?
Nope.
If not, let's move on to Raven Ridge.
Okay, Raven Ridge?
That's good. And that one's always good.
Raven Ridge. Okay, Raven Ridge is, is just a very small assessment district. And the numbers in here are actually based on our current assessment. Now, we just had an auction. We just had basically one developer, one property owner that had, I don't know, what, twenty lots or something that was sold at an auction. Um, this does not reflect basically paying off that portion of those, of the bonds. So, cause we're working with our bond underwriters right now. So as soon as I get the new numbers, which I should get before I come back to you with the final budgets, um, I should have a more up-to-date and revised number. But this is the largest amount. It's, it's gonna be less than this, actually. So this one is basically, you know, there's, there's just a handful of really properties left up there, especially after this one property owner kinda defaulted on some of his. But we, we have enough reserves. There were some of the properties that weren't sold during the auction. Uh, right now we do feel that we have enough money in the reserves to cover those until we go back and try to, you know, sell them at the auction again. But, uh, I think we're, this, this district and this one is very strong right now and, and we don't have any, I don't have any financial issues that I'm concerned about at this point. Ivan, did you wanna add anything?
If we had to, we would enter into a similar arrangement in this case that we have with,
Southside?
Uh, what do we call that? Um, Southside, yeah. Southside number one, where we go in and buy it and then hope to be reimbursed down the road.
No questions there? Let's, uh, move on to, uh, Quillwood Meadows.
Okay. Quillwood Meadows, their secondary assessed value increased by nine point five percent. So right now it's at nine point five million. Last year it was like eight point seven million. Again, this one right here, there is a developer, there is a standby, there's a contribution that's, that they're required to pay us every year. Right now I have an estimate in here. I'm hoping to get the final number. Typically he, we start communicating with each other sometime beginning of May. Um, so I'm gonna try to get a, a better number for the final budget. But right now I'm budgeting thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, they have up to a million dollars they can contribute, uh, to, basically to the district to be applied against debt service payments. But like I said, right now I got thirty-nine thousand budgeted. This number could either go up or down based on, basically the number of lots that are still remaining that are owned by, um, Everest. Um, so I'll find out that number, uh, a little bit in, like I said, next couple of weeks, hopefully. Um, but the good news on this one also is that their tax rate for next year will be three dollars and fifty-eight cents total. And last year it was four sixty.
Oh, good.
So it's a twenty-two percent decrease. And I also have some extra money in this account, also eighty-four thousand dollars that I will be applying toward the debt service payment.
Oh, good.
So... Those are the, that's Quillwood.
That's trending the right direction. Any other comments? Okay, let's move on to Eastridge.
Eastridge, again, well, assessment district, very good. I mean, I, this is one of the, and this is, after this it goes downhill, but... But... But this one, um, we also, this number right here that we show as the amount of assessments to be paid in the debt service, that's a little bit high. We have had one property owner that actually paid off their assessment. So I'm waiting for the final numbers that come in from Bob Casillas. So this number should also trend down a little bit. But again, um, no problems with payments, no collection issues whatsoever. Uh, and this one, actually, two thousand and eighteen is the last debt service payment on this one.
That's wonderful.
So that will be a very happy day for me.
It's nice to see him, he's coming to a closure.
But other than that, uh, there really is no, no issues or no concerns with the Eastridge CFD at all.
No other questions there? Let's move on to Parkway.
Okay. All right. Parkway, assessment went down. When, it's now at one point five million dollars. And it was one point six million last year. So it didn't go down by a lot, but it did go down. Last year, the tax rate was sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents. This year it's seventeen dollars and eighteen cents. And that's assuming that I get ten thousand dollars in contributions, which we still have not received. So there is a little bit, there's still money left in the, in the, you know, we, we do have a reserve, uh, like we have for, I don't know, how many years now? I will be filing, most likely, you know, when the payment, debt service payment comes in, you know, and I don't have adequate funds, I have to go into the reserve to make up the difference. Any, every time, anytime I do that, we have to notice, you know, put the bondholders on notice. So, so it's a material event that needs to be filed. So that will be done. It's, it's been done the last, um, five years, six years. It's been done a lot. So unfortunately, this is, um, I mean, I don't know what else to really say about this, at this point.
If, do the best you can, Bill. Let's move on to, uh, Southside.
Well, it's slightly better. That's for sure. Uh, again, the, the assessments here are our current assessments. As you know, we've been, me or mostly Ivan has been telling you over the last few years, you know, we have one property owner who has defaulted. We, we entered into the agreement so that anytime that, that property owner does not make their payment, the town basically will loan money to the CFD, then it's CFD who makes the, the debt service payment. So, you know, it's about fifty-five thousand dollars a year is what the assessment on this property is. So, um, right now there is, well, there's thirteen thousand dollars left in the reserve. So basically there, there's, the reserve is pretty much been used up to, um, been applied on debt service payments. So, um, I guess that's about all I can really add at this point. There's, I don't think there's anything else I can...
Well, let's move on to Entertainment Center.
There really isn't a, a budget for the entertainment. There is no budget for the entertainment.
Oh yeah, I don't have one.
No. We don't, we didn't, we haven't prepared a budget for the entertainment district for the last couple of years, no. Actually had that removed, I'm sorry, Mayor.
So that is it then?
That's it.
Anything else? Ivan, any last comments or Larry?
More good news than bad news.
Yeah, and the good news was, thankfully, uh, out, out preferential, frustrating news. The, uh, meeting is adjourned. Let's, uh, get her together, Bill.